By the way, we're, this is Mr. Visi- we've got some responses to several of our projects that we need to visit within closed sessions that we're going to need to settle down there for your input. So, like, work will be similar to what we did last time, uh, in closed sessions at six o'clock or not long thereafter, so we'll go through these pretty quickly. So, Mr. Collison gives an update on the Villas at Texas Star HOA request that you heard at your last meeting.
If you recall, there had been several members of the Villas at Texas Star HOA that had been represented by a Mr. Tice was their president and a couple of other property owners in there. They were discussing their desire because of the proposed commercial development on Highway 10, that that could result in some cut-through traffic through their neighborhood. And they have represented to you that they've been in discussions with many of the homeowners that live in that residential community that have, would have a desire to have some type of gate placed at the Debra Drive Double Barrel area. And we took that general request from them and visited with fire and police about the conditions under which the placement of that gate could be acceptable. And as we've kind of hashed through the issues from a conceptual standpoint, what we've really kind of thrown out to them conceptually would be the notion of placing a swing gate at Debra into the subdivision there of Double Barrel that would be emergency access only. Emergency access only. So therefore, the typical specifications that would be required dealing with opticon system or some other type of controlled access that would only be controlled by fire and police would have to be in place. We have discussed with them a location that would generally be where the wing walls begin to spread out towards Debra Drive. Those two points that we depicted are very, very significant because that angle has to be maintained for the sight of disability triangle to be maintained. So if there was some desire to shift that even perhaps farther towards Debra, that, that would not be as a practical matter possible. It wouldn't be allowed because of the sight of disability triangle. So, we've thrown out conceptually that notion and that in addition to the swing gate, there also had a desire about the pedestrian traffic. And it would be possible in this design to incorporate pedestrian gates and perhaps that could be controlled access as well through some type of keypad entry or, or something so that the folks that live within that area would have the pedestrian access. Now, there's some obviously details relating to sidewalks, public access that we obviously need to move through, but we kind of wanted to throw it out conceptually. If you could work out the technical issues of what would need to be done? If from the HOA they were to come forward and say, "We accept full financial responsibility for the additional installation. We accept the financial obligation moving forward into the future for it to be maintained." The fire department requires an annual inspection of the gates to ensure that they're properly functioning. Would they accept that? If the HO came forward and said that we, we believe that we've got very, very strong support on the part of the entirety of the HOA and in particular those that live east of Del Prado that perhaps would be most impacted by this if they had strong support, would that be something that y'all would consider? For the HOA's part, what we just described to you conceptually, they're having a discussion with their HOA this evening to provide a little feedback to us to be able to provide y'all about whether or not those conditions about the financial obligation, the impact of the gate would have, if that would be something that's, that's acceptable to them. One last detail regarding that would be the property owner here, you can see the relationship to the gate, it would be on the left side of the screen. The off-street, I'm sorry, the on-street parking in front of this house, in order for the gate to open, you would not permit that parking to occur. That homeowner has fully appreciates that fact and the HOA represented to us this afternoon that that property owner would be supportive of there being no parking on there.
Mike, remind me again, how many homeowners are so concerned about this drive-through traffic that you visited? Like, was it something like 30?
Um, yeah, that was a pretty, pretty close number, but I, I couldn't honestly tell you how many individual homeowners that that represented. The latest discussion with the HOA president today was that he would represent that they got near 100% support of the property owners on the east side of Del Prado for this to occur. And to the west, he wasn't sure, but he was confident that there was strong support.
And so what I'm hearing from some of the homeowners in that area is that there is only a very small contingent on Double Barrel that is concerned. And if you look at the drive-through traffic, it wouldn't even be on Double Barrel, it would probably be on Longbow. I'm really questioning how much of that homeowners association wants a gate there.
My real concern, this is probably a little bit strange, but these are public streets. I should be able to drive on any view of this public street, I don't care if I live there or not. And I don't think any neighborhood that has public streets should be able to put up a gate. I think that's just wrong.
I have a concern about sidewalks. Are we, if I heard you correctly, they could, they could put a gate across their sidewalk that only a person that had a keypad could, could walk into the neighborhood?
Let me back up a little before we go too far there. Where some of this thought came from was the area that is north of Ash Lane and east of Fuller Lots, that subdivision there. I'm drawing, Blake Black Wildbrier, can you pull that up? Can you do the last for me in just a minute? When that subdivision was built, there was a street that cut through Fuller Lots. And as it was going in, and people bought the homes knowing, "Go out, that street went through." As it was going in, they got concerned with that and approached the city council and I can show you a map, this day, that street is closed. It's, it's just a closed street. O'Connell in Marston, that went into Hurst, we closed that at the Marston residence. There's a subdivision at 360 in Glade Road that has a gate. This Thornwood, this, you can basically see that, that went through, that was closed. And then, can you go up there to the Glade, to that mid, or, can you, maybe, you're big with the streets. I don't want to argue for it, I'm just saying, because I understand the concept. Set sidewalk aside for a minute, because it's, it's a more complicated situation, but everybody's, is everyone familiar with O'Connell? Is there any to go out there? You understand that that went through to Hurst and the Marston residents were extremely concerned with that. Right here, there's a gate that was put right here. It's a public street, but as that subdivision went in, fire department required two access points if you, yeah. So, the fix was to put a gate across there that only the fire department had access to, everybody else had to go out onto Glade Road. So, not without president.
What was the purpose of that gate?
Well, in this case, the developer proposed it as a single point of entry out Glade Road. The fire department said, "No, we have to have two points of ingress and egress." So, this was the, was the compromise that was reached, and that this was, not my staff, but the city council when this went in, was, "Okay, we will, the developer will stub that street out, we'll put a gate right there and the only people that can get in is fire department, or police department." But the residents couldn't use it because that, and that's the key, we talked with Wayne a little bit ago, you can't have a public street that is gated that only the electric gets access to. But you can close a street and only give access to the fire and police because they need that secondary point. Go back to Mike's slides here for a minute, and I think it was the first slide he showed. Okay, Del Prado is a very typical example. Those apartments were built in the early 70s. There is one way in and one way out. That would never be permitted now. The developer wanted that, but now the fire department requires two points of ingress and egress. When this subdivision was built, along with a lot of others, if the developer had his way, he would have probably put an house there. He wouldn't have put another drive. But we require two points of ingress and egress. And in all of these little infill lots, there's a, there's this point of contention between, and I'm saying the fire department, I don't think it's a big deal for the police department, it's not verified. So that is a requirement. You have to design the thing with two points of ingress and egress. So, left to their own devices, the developer would have never put one of those in. So it is, I guess all we're lifting up is, from a very conceptual standpoint, is, is it unreasonable to close that street and only allow the fire department access to it? The sidewalk to the, I don't think we can do it where we can give the little kids in that subdivision access to it and we can't give anybody else health access to it. This is just an idea that they're plugging. So it's, there will lots, a lot of detail to be worked out. And if the fact of the matter is, there's no support for the concept, then we'll go back and report that to them. We didn't want to close the concept to y'all if there wasn't support from the HOA. What Mr. Mayor's saying is a very valid point that we have to make sure that there is much wider support than from a few people, but we don't go anywhere with it until we determine, is there even a little bit of support for the concept?
How, how many other points of access are there to that subdivision?
One.
Just one, aren't there?
Well, yeah, the, Del Prado was already, was always there, don't come to that. That would have been a problem. So there's a, there's a point right there.
Well, you'd have one by the car there to the west.
That serves the other side.
Yeah.
But for that total enflay for homes there east of Del Prado, it is the access off of Del Prado and the access out there.
But I think you have to take the entire Villas at Texas Star, no matter what section they're in, into account, and about how many total homes are there? Can you bring that up, man?
Over 112, yeah, a little just north of 100. See, to me, it seems like they just, they don't want people going from Del Prado to the Dollar Store, cut through the neighborhood.
Exactly.
And to me, that's just elitist and I, I, there's no way I can support it.
And I don't know what obligation we have to the man on the corner who says he doesn't care, but Winkley tries to sell his house.
Yeah, exactly.
And nobody can park in front of his house. Good luck for that, probably, though.
I mean, I think, just my own opinion, but let's let Dollar Store open up, let's see if there's an issue, and then if there's something that we have to address, we address it. But I think putting gates up around, votes around your castle, I don't.
I, what I'd be curious to know is how many people on Longbow would be upset if that gate was there because it's much easier for them to access it from Debra and come in that way than come in from Del Prado. I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions from the rest of the homeowners.
I guess my confusion is too, the Dollar General store was permitted by RIDE. You go in there and so, it never came before council. So, I mean, you'd have to really have a dog in that, right there because it's permitted by RIDE. And, you know, it's whether or not those people were informed, whether or not that's commercial, you know, or not, I don't think that's really part of the discussion.
Right. And I think, quite honestly, there are legal aspects of this that are challenges to begin with, so I guess we'll take that back, that there are legal concerns, gentlemen, so I'm sure. And I think that everyone says this, let the thing open and see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, if it becomes a serious issue, then we'll go ahead and look at our options.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What were the legal issues?
One of them is, I don't know what to say, that's probably, that's really a, a, that's really a gate. Well, I don't know if Wayne can put that one out to this.
The legal issue that we've been discussing is when you've got a public street and a public sidewalk that needs to be opened to the public. We run into this a lot of times when you have developers who want to put in gated communities and they want public streets and sidewalks and the city to maintain it, but they want to get an access to their residents only, and we can't do that. We've got a public street and a public sidewalk that needs to be opened to the public. Now, there are ways that we could close the streets or vacate the streets and make it not public anymore, such stuff has to be done, but under the current status that we need to visit, how we make that happen, there's, there's an issue definitely.
And I agree, I think Perry's got the right shot, the right angle. Let her out and see what happens.
It's also an ADA issue, could it, Wayne? On the, on the sidewalk, is it an ADA issue?
Well, as long as it's public, absolutely. If you're going to restrict the access.
And that's the fact we don't want to get involved in.
All right, I don't think it's the wrong impression here, that this, um, this, all of our staff is kind of on manual mess as well, but I'm going to draw up the past issues that occurred on Longbow, O'Connell, that is not, there are means by which we'll come manually if we need to. So those, on Thornwood and the town, those streets are closed. That's the main difference, is they're, they're closed period.
Are those sidewalks closed as well?
I don't even think there are sidewalks. There are no sidewalks in Marston and Thornwood, I don't remember that. But, but in that case, I mean, even if the sidewalk given is connected with, with Fuller Lots, it would be okay, because there's no gate. It's, it's, there's a curb that they're, if they're not a gate, there are things that could happen.
Yes, sir.
But it's, so I don't know, we could pull that back up, but it's a, that street is just like closed. And we always have the opportunity, I think, to close a street.
That's looking at discretion of the city council. Obviously, taking into consideration the desire of residents out there, you make the decision on whether we keep a public street or a public road?
I, when Joe walked out, I mean, my dog was there right now.
You're what? I have plenty of privilege.
On your own, it's going to be hell.
Absolutely. So Mike, tell us about development in Grand. You're going to show some gates there, aren't you? That looks pretty good in that place.
Yes, it's not necessary to get to that. Let's start with Glade Parks. We are attempting to communicate with this graphic when we talk about Glade Parks, what the status of the various components that make up the overall development. And if that is not communicating information clearly, please let us know. We are going to show you an update on the bottom right that indicates under construction would be the building 21 that you can see has gone vertical. They would expect to be able to complete that in the next six to eight weeks is what Tom Winn told me this morning. And the lineup of the end users that is indicated on the top there still remains the same. A lot of progress that's been made on the infrastructure to support that development, including the continuation of Rio Grande Connect into Cheeks Barter that Mr. Kramer has reported to y'all. There are significant completion of the dedicated turn lanes that are a part of the service road that will feed you into the three primary ingress egress points off of the service road. You can see one of the entryway features off of Chisholm Trail, which is the second for the, really, that's going to be the main entrance of the three, is under development. Let's shift to the Kaoff Manion, the single-family development there on the west side, south of the river lots that have been developed. If you drive there on Red River, you will see that the masonry materials that will be included in the masonry screening wall are visible. You can get a little bit of an idea of what that's going to look like. Shifting to the Gateway Bloomfield subdivision on the east side of Gateway, their roads have now been poured. The interior spine road, they'll connect with the drive approaches to Gateway, will be the next stage as soon as it dries out. Moving to the Dominion at Bear Creek, you can see continued progress. This picture is showing you the amenity center that is under construction. I think that they are now up to 18 out of the 206 total subdivision that have been pulled. This picture, I might point out that when we talk about the Villas project that's proposed that we're going to talk about later that you're being asked to consider approval of the site, we're going to talk about the architectural design features. One of the quality standards that y'all had approved as part of the PD was that they extend the masonry to the side and actually have some architectural design to that so that it's just not a blank wall. And that's a good example of how they've extended that, use of that stone material onto that sidewall. Again, just a picture that depicts the level of activity that's out there. The HEB family ministry, we have now shifted to Main Street and Harwood west of the Albertsons. They are continuing there on the north side, Harwood on the development of that.
Mike, are they moving from somewhere else or is this?
Yes, ma'am. They are currently leasing space farther south on the east side, and it's escaping me the name of it, but yeah, they, they leased here for many years and now they want to own their own property.
They have a building just on, probably in barbecue?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good night.
I can't remember the name, but I can't remember either.
There is a ribbon cutting for ice monkeys this Thursday, I believe. You know, just kind of the sidebar, they came in wanting to put in a snow cone stand, for lack of a better term, and put it in the middle of the parking lot and do whatever. And they, that is not permitted, but they were able to then go to this little strip chopping center owner and negotiate a favorable rate term to suggest that maybe having an occupant's better than it being vacant. And there are entrepreneurs that want to make a go of it and they're very, very passionate. And it's actually a very good snow cone according to my kids. We are on Airport Freeway at Nita and the eastbound service road. Y'all had seen previously where there had been a building that occupied this space as part of the Airport Freeway widening, a substantial part of the parking that would support this individual building that's now removed. The owners of the property made a decision to demolish that building and create additional parking, more accessible parking that's more favorable to the primary entrances into these buildings. They're doing, I'm sorry I didn't take a very good picture in the foreground, you can see some individuals that are on top of a new portico that they're building as an entryway building. They're going to duplicate that and use that as an opportunity to kind of doll up and improve the overall appearance of that property. The Skechers, in terms of the exterior work are nearing completion. They've got a little ways to go on the interior finish out before they begin to bring in, bring in the racks and everything associated with the finish out of the store. And that's it.
Miss Dew, interesting part.
No. Do I dare say that, I'm going to open the gates to the financial. This is the report for the, I'm sorry, for the month ending May 31st, 2014. Eight months into the year, that's about 66% of the way through the fiscal year. And you can see at the end of May, the fund balance of the general fund and the debt service funds increased year-to-date, which is attributed mainly to the collection of property taxes. Also part of the general funds increase as well as that in the EDC and CCPD funds are due to the strength in sales tax collections this year. In the car rental and hotel occupancy tax, funds will notice a decline in fund balance due to the funding of revenue sharing, capital projects, and debt service transfers made by these funds during the year and the timing of the year-end revenue receipts. Other funds that are decreased here are similar in nature to capital funds in that they have infrequent or unreliable revenues, and therefore we only budget for funds that are already available, so it's more of a drawdown of their fund balance. In the proprietary funds, the water and wastewater fund decreased due to funding of capital projects, reduction in consumption, and the normal cycle of the year. The recreation class fund has a planned drawdown of funds this year for capital and equipment purchases, so you can see that decrease already here. And Arbor Day's final receipts have come in. While expenses were over budget, so were the revenues. There is sufficient fund balance available to cover the expenses being greater than the revenues, and this was due to the additional, addition of more attractions to enhance the event for children and families. Excuse me. Several of the other proprietary funds saw an increase in fund balance, including Texas Star Sports Complex as well as Texas Star Golf Course, that you'll see in more detail in just a few minutes. In the internal service funds, the risk management fund decreased due to our annual payment to TML for property liability and workers comp insurance, and the equipment replacement fund has already made approved purchases for the year. Both of those funds continue to draw monthly transfers in to cover those cash-out flows. The insurance fund continues to increase due to the timing of their plans. Overall, at the end of the year with $40.5 million, and after half, after 67% of the year, we have a combined fund balance of already over $47 million in the operating funds. Capital projects funds, balance at the end of the month were over $17 million, which was an increase of over $2.8 million due to an extra payment year-to-date. Looking at the consolidated statement of revenues and expenditures, many of our large revenue, sources of revenues are meeting or exceeding prior year collections and current year budget expectations. These include the property taxes, sales taxes, brochure receipts, and municipal court collections. Charges for services remain below budget in prior year, mostly due to the conservation measures as well as cold weather. As of the end of May, operating revenues were at $2.3 million higher than prior year and 1.3 million more than budgeted expectations. Overall... Overall, operating expenses at the end of May totaled sixty million dollars, which is under budget expectations year-to-date by forty, four point seven percent or three million dollars. The majority of the under spending at this point is coming from the timing of capital expenses. Looking at the individual funds, the general fund has collected revenues of twenty-six point four million. That's seventy-eight point one percent of the budgeted expectations. Again, we're sixty-seven percent of the way through the year. Property taxes are strong through May. This is above prior year totals as well as budgeted forecast year-to-date, which is noted by that black line. Sales tax collections have been very strong. Only one month this year has been lower than the prior year for the same month. This contributes to our fiscal year-to-date sales tax collections exceeding both prior year as well as budgeted levels. Municipal court revenues vary per month-to-month based on case volume and the timing of payments. As you can see from the chart, this fiscal year, every month has exceeded revenues from the part of two fiscal years. And fiscal year-to-date revenues are currently above prior year and budgeted expectations. Development revenues also vary on a month-to-month basis depending on developmental activity. Fiscal year-to-date, this revenue is higher than our budgeted expectations, but is lower than prior year receipts year-to-date. General fund expenditures through the end of May are at twenty-one point four million dollars or fifty-nine percent of budget. Our rental fund has seen an increase in revenues when compared to prior years for May. Fiscal year-to-date, the revenue source is exceeding both prior year and budget. Year-to-date, this revenue source is up four percent.
Did we budget or that could be less than the prior year?
For the whole year, we expected it to be level with last year's collections.
Looks like it's less.
That is the budget to date, the 2014 budget year-to-date. So we haven't completed the budget cycle yet. Those are just the eight months that we've gone through so far. The water wastewater fund, our large proprietary fund, fiscal year-to-date collections totaled eleven point eight million dollars, which represents fifty-seven percent of budget. Our expenditures through the end of May are less than prior year due to the funding of capital projects in 2013 and totaled twelve point four million or fifty-eight point five percent of budget. As of May 31st, Texas Star was two thousand five hundred and twenty rounds homes below budget due again to weather conditions this year. But revenues per round is above budget as well as prior year. The decline in the number of rounds has resulted in an overall shortfall in golf revenues of seventy-five thousand dollars. But when combined with the increase in the food and beverage revenues of ninety-nine thousand, the revenues exceeded budget year-to-date by twenty-five thousand dollars. In operating expenses, through the end of May, were cut below budget by twenty-two thousand dollars, leading to facility within net gain of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Year-to-date, revenues of Texas Star Sports Complex exceeded budget expectations by fifty-two thousand dollars. And expenses of the complex were over budget projection by twenty-two thousand. This leaves the facility with a net operating gain of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars better than our budgeted estimates. You have any questions?
Our water revenue here.
It's been pretty low. I don't have the exact percentage right now in front of me, but we've been running about ninety-three percent of our expected consumption. Ninety-three percent of what we had expected. So the revenues are definitely down. TRA is down, but they've also charged us their normal fall payments that they.
And those are our expenses are below too. So I guess that's going to balance it out hopefully.
Water problem, condition that we have wells down.
Yeah.
So we're trying to reduce the production. One now.
Yes.
So we're trying to catch up. It's, I mean, we keep running and we're getting running. We're getting it. We're a little concerned about the water this year. And don't fall. Water is a liability.
We heard and seen in the presentation again pre-council. I'm worried she's confused or something.
Any questions there? While we're looking, we could start on agenda review. Several. Let me go to a few of the directors. Item number three is purchase of ACAC units. This is for Pittsburgh. Cooperative. In budget account, yes sir. Item number four is approval of purchase agreement for any emergency repair services. Add electric service to contract with the city person. Item number five is award bid number oh oh nine dash one four for replacement of the water line along help again in reality. Very pleased with that. And Alex, I need to add to that. Comfortable with the.
Yes, Eric, yes sir.
Questions for y'all on that? Item number six is award bid ten dash fourteen for the construction of Brazos Boulevard. This is the last second road out there at Glade Parks. The developer has escrowed the funds for that. And we recommend the award of that. It's under budget, but we will be owing the developer a return of escrow. We will retain one hundred and ten percent of the construction cost. And if there should be any overruns in that, we will owe that to. Any questions or comments on that?
Good contract.
Item number seven is extension of the contract for request for proposal through our pharmacy benefit manager. This is the LBI who's our current pharmacy benefit manager. And this is the second. Item number eight is extension of contract for RFP with Leaver for our.
Independent services.
And they've been our aldermen for a long time. We've had approval of that. Item number nine is considered operating and later execute joint administrative agreement in Kent County. This is for the administration for CPG. Discuss that before. I would recommend that you put forward that. Be paid in Kent County.
Speaking of Tarrant County, we got this letter from Tarrant County about the application they are making for housing tax credit program for the property in Coleroyzer and Ashland. I was a little surprised that all of those apartments, two hundred and fifty of them, are sectionated apartments.
Yeah, I apologize for that. If we had not made that clear, then I apologize for that.
Well, I'm not complaining about it.
No, I understand, but it's.
I thought that there was only a portion of that.
Yeah, at the meeting last time, we were calling just four.
Yeah.
That they're currently using full section.
Yeah, but it's. They're all fall under the Tarrant County housing operation. We've got some information for you on that. Is there maybe someone here that that's actual? That's item thirteen. So let me call that in just a second. Item ten, Resolution fourteen fourteen thirty-seven, Jack County, Alex, you can develop a diagram on the part of your ship. Emergency solution grant consortium. Item number eleven is considered acceptance of the CIC, which is reported. I was going to stop right there, but I'm going to go ahead and go to item thirteen before we like to get into Mr. Fordville's question. Now, he asked me to hold up a period and consider the resolution fourteen fourteen thirty-six for those apartments that Mr. Fordville is referencing. And all your findings, if you have no objection, if you have no arguments whatsoever, then no objection. There was a letter that went out to the residents last week. And we got somewhat of a little concern and we got some calls, but my house got some assurances from Tarrant County. Is that?
That's a copy of the letter. That was the subject of the questions. And then from the president of the management company of the apartments that is actually the applicant for the tax credit application submitted an explanation. The confusion was the belief that the property was being sold to an entity that identified itself as Lone Star. And in the explanation, you will read that as part of the qualifications necessary and to be awarded additional points for the tax credits, they need to partner with a not-for-profit entity. And as part of the qualification for the award of the points of the federal tax credits that they're used to finance the rehabilitation, they have partnered with this not-for-profit providing services to the residents. And the types of services that you can see here, everything from daycare. Trying to remember everything.
She included her job preparation.
Yes.
Newsletters. Nutrition courses.
Thank you, just guessing, just guessing, guessing. So the clarifications, no, it's not being sold to that entity, but instead they are partnering with that nonprofit, which is consistent with the program that they're applying for the rehab funds.
You verified that with Patricia Ward.
Yes.
That can't can't be developed. There is no change in the operation whatsoever. And then the owner, she is the owner of the company that will be here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Not the property manager, but the owner of the company will be here to answer any questions. I don't know that we expect any objection from the resident. I hope we got their question answered.
In fact, the individual that made the call when she was provided that explanation, we didn't get a return call.
All right, so that's, just so you know. So we'll hold the flat plans for after dinner and for commission bonds and cover that quickly when we reconvene after dinner.
Mr. Kane, the author of that letter that I distributed is Stephanie, is from Stephanie Baker. She is who will represent them this evening.
And then we'll cover those two items and then we're in a class session. That's okay. So, here, and that is, sorry, I was.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Mr. St. For a big twenty.
That was great. Yeah, I sat down. I guess, I don't know. Just the way the lady went in here.
Well, they started at four, they go to five-thirty. And then they take their break for lunch or dinner there. It'll be about a half hour.
Yeah.
Anywhere from twenty to thirty minute break. They'll come back and consider this other agenda. Yeah, they're just going over the agenda. They've finished the seven o'clock session. But they go into the closed session here after they discuss this public hearing for the site plan. The site plan they have to do for is the conditions. They do their closed session, closed session topics are up here. Hey, Al, how's it going?
Good, Eric, you?
Well, I got a small question.
I got a small mind, so I may be able to handle that small question.
The shut-off valve at the street. Are they supposed to be vertical?
Normally.
Because I got one at the forty-five degree angle.
Hard turnoff.
Almost impossible to turn. How do I get that to whistle?
We just need to put in a service request and then come out and change that.
It's at one zero zero four Fayette Drive. I've got, doing some, changing out a few valves, shut-off valves that don't shut off water. So I need to set it off in the street and already do that.
Just calling a request.
Okay.
Yeah, my next door neighbor Kenny had one. They were out of town. And I tried to go up and turn that water off. Tore every knuckle I had up. Finally, he said, no, I've got a special tool in my garage. And with that, I could actually get it turned off. Then they called.
Yeah, if they're running, I've got one of those that water, what do they call it? Water tees.
But they're doing, you can't get it on them.
No.
And that was their problem.
Pair of wires, you can't hold it. It's deep too. It's probably a foot and a half deep. It's almost arm length to start with.
Since then, they've had, they called the city up there and had it changed, which is good in case I ever have.
I'll just call it. You come to pre-council very often?
A couple, three times. I haven't come in here ages.
Yeah, if you come to the summer classes.
Yeah, I thought it was early and I didn't realize it was seven. I knew they came in here at four.
Yeah, they come at four to the. I've got it all one day.
We wanted to show you first, give you a little reminder of what the concept plan that had been approved as part of the overall Riverwalk Plan Development looked like. On the left side of the screen in the yellow is the Dominion Single Family project that we've been providing you regular updates. The arrow that points to the M one point one that is on the east side of Bear Creek Parkway, that is the NRP urban lot development that is under construction. The M one point two would be property that could also be developed as urban lot that the NRP has got a right of first refusal on that to purchase for a future phase of the urban development work. Virtually certain that they're going to exercise. The property that is the subject of the site plan consideration is there in the brown there on the hard corner, that southeast corner of Bear Creek and Midway. Note, there were two, at least two permitted, single-family. I'm sorry, there were at least two different types of residential development that could have been constructed there. It could have been either single-family detached, which is what's being proposed, or it could have been attached townhomes. So again, what they are proposing to be developed would be the single-family detached as opposed to the attached townhome development. As part of the ordinance, every one of the types of residential development corresponds to a specific lot type. And in this instance, the type of single-family detached housing product they're going to be developing is referred to as a lot three. And that basically means that it's going to have an alley with a garage that's accessed from the rear. And then corresponding to. and there are types of, of, um, of, sorry, I just lost my train of thought, street types and frontage types, excuse me, um, that are associated with the development of that. So the development that you will see proposed, uh, in the site plan is consistent with what has been approved as part of the overall development standards associated with the residential development. So, what are, what are they proposing? They want to develop a sixty lot subdivision that would be single-family detached on four thousand square foot lots. They would be constructed for each individual lot with a fifteen-foot rear setback and five-foot side setbacks. This would be constructed again with rear access garages that would be accessed by alleys that are private alleys, and therefore along with all of the common areas and the main street screening wall that will be constructed, um, around the perimeter of Bear Creek Midway and the Menters Chapel will be the responsibility of the homeowners association to maintain. So between the front building line of each individual lot and the back of curb of the street, there will be a four-foot parkway, and that four-foot parkway will be planted with street trees that will be planted thirty foot on center.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be parking on the street as well?
There, yes, ma'am. Um, there is specifically, uh, just as you would on any subdivision, there would be, um, on-street parking, um, yes, on-street parking permitted.
Streets are standard width?
Yes, they're standard width. Um, consistent with the Dominion that's under development, we've shown you pictures of the entryway features, the, um, main street screening walls, the landscaping, you can expect that same level of quality, uh, that will be incorporated into the, uh, elements of this subdivision as well. And these would depict the examples of the type of home that's being specifically designed for this lot size, and it's consistent with architectural design features that y'all have adopted as part of the overall ordinance.
Is the stretch collection in the front or the back?
It will be in the front.
And does this activate the build-out of Menters Chapel Road?
That is a very, very good question. The, the Menters Chapel Road that is to be built follows the existing right-of-way that is the current, I'm not saying that correctly, the new Menters Chapel is being constructed within the existing right-of-way. Um, as part of the future development to the south that will occur, there will be a need to revisit or visit the issue of whether or not the existing right-of-way will be abandoned in, in order to create a new alignment that would be consistent with the curvature of the existing Bear Creek Parkway, but, uh, that's, that's a discussion that will take place for future development, specific to the extension of Menters Chapel Road for this, this stays within the existing right-of-way.
And whatever they do in the future will connect with this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is a little bit unusual in that the land use was determined at the concept plan?
Yes, sir.
This is the site plan, and, uh, so it is a, a serial function, the lot type has already been specified, and really all of that was specified in the concept plan, and the way I try to look at this is, uh, it's, it's an upgrade from the house, it's, it's less dusty, and they're a very nice home, it wouldn't necessarily be something that, you know, and I would prefer larger yard, this is very small, but it is, it's an upgrade from the townhome, and it is allowed by the law, so the lot time is already specified, so if you're ever feeling high, just make sure that they're adhering to those, uh, documents.
Not flowing water also?
Pardon?
Not flowing water?
Yes, yes, yeah, everything out there will be, in the common areas, not the individually common block.
That one is good, I'm gonna verify that.
I'm just curious, do they have anything with projected price coming in?
Uh, we're being told in the three hundreds, upper two hundreds, three hundreds. They will, uh, you know, the minimum seventeen, but they've got average, um, over two thousand square feet and with what they're paying for the dirt and how it's amenitized, um, it'll command a price.
And this product sells, I mean, my experience is that this, this kind of product sells much more quickly than the townhome concept product, I'm sure.
Question, all right, thank you, ma'am. Our last item there is on the Board of Commission for, we've got some, uh, a close session discussion, but the, uh, Ms. Kim has provided you a, uh, a list there of what, discussion is, and what some of the regulations are. Uh, and the Shelter Advisory Board, I think mine has agreed to, uh, I think we may have discussed the times, we, we may have to work with him with his schedule, but, uh, to at least get us through for a while on that, and then we would ask that the, uh, place that is designated for one to has to do with the daily operations of Shelter, that you would designate, not by name, but by title, the city manager designated, uh, so, uh, my thought that would be Alan, but it could also be James, uh, the winner.
Can we change that, see manager or designate?
Oh, it is designate.
Or designate.
It says, see manager or his designate.
Yes.
Change it to designate, move to his part.
Okay.
Why? Why? Does that mean we won't have to revisit in the future?
Well, the city manager is the one doing the business.
But it may not be him.
Right, it may not be him.
Well, you're just taking the gender reference out.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I thought, I'm like, gee, it's.
That's probably more.
Gary might have my word.
Okay, uh, the Hills Development Corporation, which is, we can discuss in a closed session, see if it is a regulation, Mr. Thompson. Parks and Recreation Services, we, we, uh, don't let up anything, we think that's okay until October on that. Land Zoning Commission, uh, is what we would recommend to you would be Ronald Funkel, and I'm sure that can be discussed in closed session. Uh, PAX Interment Finance, Reinvesting Zone Three, we would recommend, Mr. Brian. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Altitude Number Two, uh, we would recommend that you consider one young, uh, as free to serve, and by the way, I think y'all will realize this, that this, this has come from discussions with y'all, as much as we are not trying to be bold. And Kim, did that cover all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the, you dealt with that, if, if you want to discuss, for example, the Allen Shelter Advisory Board, you need to, oh, uh, E C, the, uh, P Z, uh, Terz, and the Z A, this is just a closed session.
Now, Ray, you still have alternate number two?
Um, yes, ma'am.
And we turn with alternate number two, alternate number one?
Uh, well, that's, we, I think we've already done that, we've moved to the one, one went to a decision.
But if it's not, uh, usually, I mean, by default, during this interim period until October, that, but if you want to do that, I can, I can.
I'm still sorry, Patrick said, well, I have two.
So you want to do that.
Should we just leave for the pending? Are you okay with that?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything about perks right now?
Yep. Okay, ma'am, I think we're ready to go to closed session.